Okay, all right. Good morning, everyone. As Chair of the Florida Virtual School Board of Trustees, I'll call to order this quarterly meeting of the board. First, I want to thank my fellow board members, Dr. Luis Alguas and entire Florida Virtual School leadership team for the hard work and the preparation you always do to make these meetings easy for us. I also want to recognize and thank our Florida Virtual School teachers and staff for your dedication to excellence and the students and families we serve. And we saw that on graduation last couple of weeks ago. With that stated, let us proceed with the role call. Mr. Moore, will you take role?
Dr. John Watret.
Present.
Ms. Linda Ryder.
Present.
Mr. Rob Conerance.
Present.
Mr. Ed Puswoli.
Here.
And Dr. Tony Arsa.
Dr. Arsa is absent at the moment, and that will be noted. He may join later. Thank you, Bruce. Next, we'll open the floor for any opening comments from the board members. Madam Coach, Ms. Ryder.
No, just good morning, everyone.
Thank you. And Dr. Arsa is not here at the moment. Board member Conerance?
I just thank everybody for the preparation, especially a couple other extra meetings I had asked for on marketing, some other things. Very, very informative and helpful. So thanks, thanks to everybody.
And board member Puswoli.
Well, appreciate everybody's hard work. And now we're here, and thank you for the preparation. And hopefully, hopefully, Tony will show.
Yeah, I echo everything you said. And as I said, my, the graduation went really well. Seeing 600 plus students graduated, that really shows the meaning of what we're doing. So now let's move to turn to the minutes of our past two meetings. We asked to consider the March 7th, 2023 quarterly board meeting minutes and the May 23rd, 2023 agenda review workshop minutes. Is there a motion to adopt the recommended action and approve the minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is everyone? Motion passes unanimously. Well, no, it doesn't. The motion passes. Dr. Arsa is not there. Next, the board will receive public comment. Before we begin, I would ask speakers to observe the following ground rules pursuant to the board's bylaws. Public comments should be pertinent to board agenda items. Persons who wish to speak during the public hearing on item 9.1 are asked to reserve comments until the opening of that hearing. Each speaker is limited to a two-minute comment period and cannot yield to another speaker. At the end of the two-minute period, the speaker's microphone will be muted. If the speaker runs out of time, then written comments may be submitted. Speakers must state their first and last name for the record before delivering their comments. Speakers may ask questions, but board members and Florida Virtual School officials are not required to respond. Rather, it shall be their prerogative to respond, and the board chair will take up any such responses after the public comment period. Further, speakers should not note that this meeting, including the public comment period, is being recorded. Operator, is there any members of the public who have called in and wish to speak to the board?
We have no members at this time.
Thank you. So this concludes the public comment period. We next turn to section four for agenda for CEO comments, reports, and presentations. Dr. Alguas, over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Watret. We have four agenda items to share today. The first item is the quarterly financial report for the period ending March 31st, 2023. The charts I'll be sharing with you provide a snapshot of our financial information, including year-to-date completions and year-to-date actuals and projections. This will give you an idea of where we stand fiscally. Again, this is for the ending the last quarter. It is presented graphically for the quarter ended June 30th, 2022, the prior year, and 2023, current year, using blue and red bars. The year-to-date information is also represented as of June 30th, 2022, for the prior year, and projected for June 30th, 2023, using gray and yellow bars. This chart shows year-to-date completions for three categories: part-time or flex, virtual learning labs, self-pay, and full-time. For the period ending March 31st, completions for flex total 376,444 are shown in red, an increase of about 8,014 from the prior year of 368,430, as shown in blue. Completions for virtual learning lab self-pay for the quarter ended March 31st are 31,016 as compared to 28,038 in the prior year. Completions for full-time for the quarter ended March 31st are 50,624, a decrease of 17,379 compared to the prior year of 68,003 as of March 31st.
Is that, is that due to COVID, really, the full-time drop? That the students have gone back to regular?
Primarily, that's exactly what it is. Although I, from our projections, as I'll mention now in the next set of slides, again, these are as of the end of March. I got some numbers yesterday, and we're actually going to be pretty close and over in some cases. We already are here showing flex is going to be over for sure. And full-time, they're not exactly at where we projected. They're going to be a little bit over, actually.
Okay.
Yes, the drop overall has been because of COVID return after COVID and all of the financials, actually. Slide three. The chart shows prior year actual completions compared to projected completions for this fiscal year. Actual completions for flex as of June 30th, 2022 were 559995, as shown in gray, compared to projected completions of 546873. We're currently at 560 with still the rest of this month to go, so we actually think we'll be over the projection. We're projecting a slight decrease in FTE and virtual learning lab self-pay at year-end from 42940 at June 30th, 2022 to 42127 at June 30th, 2023, again, based on the March numbers. And FLVS is projecting a decrease in full-time FTE from 130289 at June 30th, 2022 to 101500 at June 30th, 2023. This chart presents revenue and expenditures for the general fund through March 31st for both current and prior years. General fund is the operating fund of FLVS and includes revenue and expenditures related to flex and full-time. Year-to-date revenues through March 31st, 2023 increased 4 million from 229.4 million in prior year, the blue bar, to 233.4 million in current year, the red bar. Year-to-date expenditures through March 31st have increased 13.9 million from 213.8 million at March 31st, 2022 as compared to 227.7 million at March 31st, 2023. This chart represents prior year actuals as compared to projected current year actuals for the general fund. Revenues at fiscal year end are expected to increase from 308.8 million, which is a gray bar in the prior year, to 318.2 million in the current year, the yellow bar. This is a result of the increase in FFP revenue from $462 to $493 per completion. Year-to-date expenditures are also projected to increase from 285.7 million in the prior year to 308.6 million in the current year. And because the growth in revenue outpaces the growth in expenditures overall, the fund balance is anticipated to grow from 123.5 million to 133 million. This chart indicates revenue and expenditures for the enterprise fund through March 31st for both current and prior year. The enterprise fund consists of FlexPoint, Global School, and Franchise. Year-to-date revenues for the enterprise fund through March 31st, 2023 decreased 15.3 million from 46.8 million in prior year, the blue bar, to 31.5 million in current year, the red bar. Year-to-date expenditures through March 31st, 2023 have decreased 3.6 million from 19.2 million at March 31st, 2022 as compared to 15.6 million at March 31st, 2023. This chart represents prior year actuals compared to projected for the enterprise fund at fiscal year end. Revenues are projected to decrease from 54.6 million in the, in prior year, the gray bar, to 41.1 million in the current year, the yellow bar. The year-to-date expenditures are also projected to decrease from 29.2 million in the prior year to 28.2 million in the current year. Net operating profit is 12.9 million. Transfers out are projected to be 11.2 million. Transfers out fund the course development and operating development projects. Fund balance is projected to increase slightly to 71.2 million at June 30th, 2023. This concludes the quarterly financial report.
So just one question. On the general fund, year-over-year actuals versus prior, the, you know, there is a large increase in expenditures compared to the increase in revenue. Is, was, what caused more expenses this year?
Are you referring to slide six, so I can have the right?
Yeah, the general, general fund year-over-year actuals versus prior. Next, no, next, go. The, the general fund one.
Go back one slide there.
And back one more. That one.
All right. So yeah, the, the expenditures have increased as the revenues have increased as well. The expenditures have increased at a higher rate. We did not cut, and again, the bars are kind of, you see, the 229 to 233 is about five, and the 213 to 227 is 14. So we did not have a layoff of staff in order to make sure that we maintained the services for students. And in projection of the upcoming year, we would have hated to have laid off a lot of staff. And then as we project some increases here in the next year, slight increases to have to have different staff come back onboard. We thought riding it out, we had enough of the, the balance to be able to ride that out and course correct here for the upcoming year.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Dr. Ray, can I follow up with that, please? What is the anticipated? I mean, do you have? It seems to me you're overstaffed, though.
We, we are overstaffed a bit in the teaching area. We, and a lot of this, and this will actually come out more clearly at the end of the year. As our revenue increases, we'll see that the, that expenditure is more in line with the increase in revenue because we're expecting an increase in our FTE of our completions. We're expecting an increase in completions by the end of the year. As I mentioned earlier, we have currently 560,000 towards what we're expecting of 585,000 completions. So that number is going to increase that revenue projection. And it's also going to be maintained at the expenditure projection because we're not increasing the expenditures. So our revenue will probably be increasing by the end of the actual June 30th year, and our expenditures will remain about the same.
Are you prepared with a plan B for mitigation?
Absolutely. Yeah, it's, again, talking about layoffs is not something that engenders a lot of morale in, in staff. So we have plans if needed. We have not backfilled a lot of positions as natural attrition has occurred. As people have, are going to be retiring here soon, as folks have resigned for whatever reason. And so we're not backfilling those positions. We currently have a pause on any hiring in order to make sure that we, we are properly staffed for the upcoming year. So yeah, we do have the plans in place to make sure that the revenues do not outpace the expenditures.
I just don't want us getting like a school district that hires and then right, overloads and then finds itself.
We'll never, that position. We're also looking at if need, and again, I mentioned, I think at our last meeting, that our, we consider our, our teaching staff, our staff in general, but especially our faculty, huge assets. There is a teacher shortage around the country, and we're looking at using possibly some of our teachers towards the FlexPoint School to be able to fill in some of those teaching shortages in other states, for instance, and be able to generate revenue that way.
Any other questions? All right, we can move on.
All right. I'm in my spot here. Okay. Concludes the quarterly financial report. Next, Dr. Chrissy Canitas, our Senior Director of Governance, Risk, and Compliance, will share a compliance update. Chrissy?
Thank you, Dr. Alguas. Good morning, board members. For this compliance update, I'll share where we were when we first started, where we are now, and where we're heading in the near future. So the compliance program was established in November 2021. Next slide, please. And was a result of the recommendations from the Florida Department of Education based on the findings in the 2019 Ernst &amp; Young Audit of FLVS. One of the goals noted by the Florida DOE was ensuring stakeholders' confidence, and one of the strategic initiatives tied to this goal involved improving ethical safeguards. Based on these recommendations, an overhaul of policies was started, which was led by our Office of General Counsel. A certified auditor was brought onboard, and the enterprise compliance team was formed. Next slide. One of the first things we discussed involved how we could help FLVS meet these goals. These discussions led to a defined focus for the compliance team, which is to provide the tools, resources, and monitoring and management system to cultivate full compliance by FLVS to all applicable laws, rules, regulations, policies, and expectations. Next slide. To fulfill this charge, we created an initial framework with four key areas on which we could build and develop the compliance program. The first was to research, identify, and implement a compliance governance system, which will allow us to easily track, monitor, and document our current state of compliance. The next was to establish and implement a compliance communication plan to ensure our team members know what they need to comply with. Then we needed to identify compliance owners in each department who assist in providing documentation to determine compliance with federal and state laws. Finally, we determined we needed a database of all applicable laws, rules, and regulations, as well as board policies to understand how the organization can meet compliance standards. Next slide. This framework then led us to what we call the Core of Compliance at FLVS, which includes board policies, administrative procedures, and department SOPs. Our board adopted policies are based on federal and state statutes and regulations. Administrative procedures specify how we implement a policy. These will be reviewed annually, but may need to be updated more frequently due to legislative or internal process changes. Department standard operating procedures, or SOPs, provide the steps to carry out a process or task within a department and may or may not be associated with a policy or administrative procedure. Next slide. Currently, we are analyzing our board policies and state laws and rules, breaking down each policy and law to specific actionable tasks that FLVS will need to comply with. These actionable tasks are then used for compliance monitoring and the development of administrative procedures. We are working closely with department compliance owners to ensure we have at least one administrative procedure aligned to each adopted policy. We are also assisting departments with revising and developing their department-level SOPs. Another focus area is the development of compliance and policy training. Our goal is to have policy training and communication ready soon after board adoption, so employees are immediately aware of any new or revised policies. The compliance team is also involved in compliance monitoring and reviews. These reviews assist department compliance owners with process improvement or information on how internal controls are functioning. And then lastly, we have created a compliance site on the FLVS Internet called Compliance Central. Next slide. Compliance Central is currently in a soft launch with anticipated full launch in mid-August. The site will provide easy access to board policies, administrative procedures, department SOPs, staff handbooks, and policy training. Next slide. Moving forward, we will continue to build out the compliance central site to have a library of administrative procedures and department SOPs. We will also develop compliance training, which will include self-paced courses, Zoom recordings, and sessions focused on compliance at the Annual Professional Learning Conference in September. We are also working to mature the audit function, which will be moving under the compliance umbrella to have it be more integrated with risk and compliance. The auditor will maintain independence in their audits and will have a direct line to the CEO to present findings and recommendations. Finally, we are developing the compliance governance system, which will track, monitor, and document compliance at FLVS. Next. As part of the development of the compliance governance system, we have analyzed more than 130 active board policies. And from those policies, we've identified nearly 3,500 actionable compliance items. These items may include things like training, procedure development, or reporting requirements. We are also analyzing state education laws to identify what applies to FLVS. Currently, there are more than 2,000 laws and rules that we are reviewing to determine the actionable steps that we may need to comply with. Next slide. While the tracking and monitoring functions in the system will be instrumental to our work, the notification system that we are building as part of the program is going to be key to its success. For example, if a policy is newly adopted or amended, it will trigger notifications to department owners to review the administrative procedure, department SOP, any actionable steps they need to complete, and any evidence that must be documented. If the change involves new legislation, then the notification will also include a flag that noting that a new policy may need to be created if required by law. We have already scoped out the requirements for the CGS and are now in the process of identifying a developer for the system. We hope to have the first phase of the compliance system ready for use in the coming school year. Next. And that does conclude my update. I look forward to sharing more about the compliance program with you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions about any of that?
So, Dr. Ray, now you know why HB1 was so important. You were able to go private without all the regulations or a lot of the compliance issues that were just outlined. I mean, it's, it's, for all the things that we talk about, non-regulation and everything, kind of reducing regulation. Why these public schools like, like us are subject to all these things. It's crazy.
Yeah, and, and it's a lot of it. And the, the beauty of what Chrissy and her team have put together is it gives us a centralized location to make sure that we're not missing anything because it could be easy to miss when you have that kind of volume.
Yeah, and I think we should, we should also advise the department of how much it costs us to comply. I think that's important information for them to know.
Will do. We'll calculate that out. Corey, you got your margin orders there? Thank you, Chrissy. Next, for item 4.3, Mr. Sheriff, I can continue?
Yes. Yeah.
Ms. Beth Brunner, manager of the FLVS Foundation, will share with you the FLVS Foundation's June 2023 quarterly report. Beth?
Thank you, Dr. Arielle Gaze, and good morning, board members. This is a June 2023 Board of Quarter Director Trustees quarterly report. Our STEM Summer Camp kicks off next week. It's providing FLVS students with introduction to the world of simulation. Forty underrepresented fifth through 10th graders, full-time students from Orange, Osceola, and Seminole Counties have been selected to participate in this unique STEM-based program in collaboration with the National Center for Simulation. Students will be provided laptops from the foundation with specific hardware and software capable of running programs to develop simulations for modeling, simulation, and technology, and to create virtual robots, gaming, animations, and other programs. The camp takes place at the Department of Defense Starbase Central Lab in Orlando with a focus on MS&amp;T workforce development pipeline, early learning to careers taught by certified modeling, simulation, and training professionals with a focus on careers in defense, energy, healthcare, entertainment, environment, transportation, homeland security, manufacturing, aerospace, entrepreneurship, and education. Next, our Laptop for Learners program. We conducted an assessment of 100 FLVS students who received a laptop through the Foundation's Laptop for Learner Program. Some of the primary outcome measures included students would not have been able to attend FLVS if they had not been provided with a laptop. More than 90% of the parents reported that it helped their student learn in a safe environment. The foundation did receive $25,000 from Tampa Electric Company to help continue the program for 2023-24. The foundation did award 19 scholarships at graduation as a result of newly created scholarships honoring individuals, grant funding received, and partnerships formed with organizations supporting the mission and activities of the foundation and FLVS. One of our star students who received a scholarship, Kylie Cummings, despite facing significant health challenges and overcoming various medical hurdles, has exhibited remarkable resilience and determination in maintaining exceptional academic performance and achieving outstanding grades throughout the quarter. In addition to her scholastics achievements, Kylie has managed to successfully establish her own Etsy shop, showcasing her entrepreneurial spirit and demonstrating her ability to excel not only academically, but also in the realm of creative business endeavors. Her noteworthy accomplishments and entrepreneurial initiative exemplify her exceptional commitment to personal growth and academic excellence. For foundation governance, the foundation board did meet yesterday at the headquarters. David Odehowsky, President and CEO of Edith Bush Foundation, presented on board engagement, community, and statewide programs for the foundation as well as other tips for the board engagement. The board did approve our 2023 annual budget. And lastly, we focus a lot on our FLVS family. We regularly receive requests from teachers, counselors, and families for individual student support, a gift card for gas to take a student to a testing location, funds for a student who needs to purchase material for student club. And the foundation hosted to revere our proudest family at our recent Fort Myers Top Golf. The family recently lost their home and belongings in a fire. Thank you, Dr. Alguas and board members. This concludes the foundation's report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. And I did try to get to your meeting here yesterday, but by the time I got over there, you all had finished, wrapped up, and gone by the time I was done with all my meetings. Sorry I missed you all. All right. And now for section 4.4, Student Highlights. Throughout the school year, many events take place that provide students, parents, and staff the opportunity to meet face-to-face. This can be field trips, county meetups, or special events like Grad Bash. Wanted to share with you photos from two of our bigger student events that happened near the end of the school year, our Club Award Day and Graduation. The annual Club Awards Day is a highlight of our school year because it recognizes the hard dedication and achievements of more than 350 student leaders nominated by their FLVS club sponsors. This event demonstrates how camaraderie, friendship, and continued learning evolve outside the virtual classroom. With more than 60 student clubs and activities, FLVS offers students the opportunity to expand their knowledge and spend time with friends and classmates who share their same interests. With more than 60 student clubs and activities, FLVS offers students those opportunities, as mentioned before. And we all love seeing all their proud students, parents, and families. See, it was very well attended. Congratulations to our club award winners and shout out to all our club sponsors for the time and dedication they give to our students. You've mentioned graduation a few times. Florida Virtual High School in-person graduation ceremony took place on May 26, and the virtual ceremony was streamed on May 31st. We had more than 1,100 seniors graduating with the class of 2023. We have more than 600 graduates attending in person to walk across the stage and more than 200 tune into the virtual graduation ceremony. The energy in that arena as we celebrated our students is always amazing. We're so proud of our Firebirds and know they'll always accomplish so much in their futures as they blaze new paths. Congratulations to our Florida Virtual High School class of 2023. Look at the smiles on those faces. We also have another one of our amazing works of art story to share with you. All teachers play a critical role in shaping students' life, and sometimes teachers provide support and guidance that goes beyond the coursework. Chelsea Oguero, an FLVS full-time psychology teacher, knows the importance of providing support to students when they most need it.
Chelsea is an extremely passionate educator, not only about the subject that she teaches, but also the reason behind it, and that's her students.
Tyza was a student who came to us last year. As the year started and she got settled, we found out that her mother was ill.
Her mother was diagnosed with bone and liver cancer. She was in a brick-and-mortar setting, but she knew she needed to help care for her mother.
As the sickness progressed, and sadly, Tyza's mother eventually passed away, then Chelsea stepped in and honestly just went above and beyond.
Chelsea attended the mother's funeral just to be a support for Tyza.
She also worked with the school counselor and the mental health team, and specifically the social worker, to find ways to help Tyza now that she was on her own.
Chelsea started a GoFundMe page to help Tyza pay her bills.
This child was left without a mother, and her mother was all she had. There were days that Chelsea would Zoom with Tyza at 7:00, 8:00 o'clock at night. Chelsea also invited her to her house, and they cooked meals together so she knew that Tyza had a meal that... Chelsea also invited her to her house, and they cooked meals together so she knew that Tyza had a meal that evening.
When a student is floundering and doesn't know how they're going to support themselves, having someone that they can rely on, that is really what makes a difference for students like Tyza.
But I think without Chelsea, I don't know how Tyza would have made it through what she did.
Chelsea is extraordinary. She is genuine and passionate. She's one of those people that you just want to absorb all of their goodness when you have the opportunity to connect.
Chelsea is such an amazing teacher. She is the most caring, compassionate person you would meet.
She pours herself into their, their lives.
Chelsea deserves this award. I think she's an amazing teacher. I think she's been there for Tyza and many of her other students that we probably don't even know about.
I think that we all may have an educator that we can think back on that that made a difference in our lives. And I have no doubt that Chelsea was that educator for Tyza.
Hi, FLVS family. I just want to make a quick video thanking everyone for the money that was sent. It really helped me out. I was able to pay the rest of my bills for April. Thank you so much for all of the help throughout the school year, the money, the prayers, the guidance, the resources. Thank you so much. And I'm just so thankful for everything you guys have done. Thanks.
Thank you, Chelsea O'Garrow, for your compassion and faltering dedication to making a positive difference in the lives of our students. Our work isn't just about teaching subjects and imparting knowledge. It's about nurturing compassion and grace. And Chelsea's story is just one powerful example of the hundreds of these interactions that take place every day at Florida Virtual School. We have an incredible team, and I thank them for being the heart and soul of our organization. That concludes the CEO report. Dr. Wachra, back to you.
That's great. And as I mentioned before, graduation was great. It was a lot of, you know, happy, happy folks coming across the stage. You can always see the smile. And so it makes it all worthwhile when you see the graduation. And I mean, the compassion given to, to the students as well is great. So, it's nice to have those student updates. Any other comments from board members before moving on?
Dr. Al Gaze, I just want to thank you again for doing those. That's like my favorite part of the meeting. There, there, it's just so, like I said before, you forget when you're looking at numbers all the time, that this is really what's going on day to day. And I don't know, I, I, I love these. You could do ten of them every meeting. I'd be happy. I don't know if anybody else would be, but I'd be happy. But they're great. Thank you again.
No need to thank me. Thank Mr. Boswoli.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you all. Now we'll move to the consent agenda. We'll now move to our consent agenda items at section five and six for our agenda. Dr. Algaes, back to you.
Thank you, sir. We've provided, we have proposed five consent contract agenda items for the board's consideration and approval. Five point one is the annual professional learning conference for twenty-four, twenty-two-four and twenty-two-five. Five point two is the information technology, hardware, software, and services authorization to utilize cooperative agreements. Five point three is the contract spend authority for three board-approved contracts. United Safety Council, Inc., Behind the Wheel for Driver Education, Zoom Video Communications Online Collaboration Services, and Teleforce LLC Call Center and Technical Support Services. Five point four is a stop-loss insurance. And finally, five point five, which includes our employee contract templates.
Any board members, any comments on the consent contracts in five point one through five point five? Hearing none, Dr. Algaes, move on to five points, to six.
Next, for consent, the annual reports and forms. In section six, we present and propose six reports for approvals and consent agenda items. Six point one is the approval of FLVS employee evaluation instruments. Six point two focuses on the Florida Virtual School Twenty-two-three, twenty-four District K through twelve comprehensive evidence-based reading plan. Six point three is the Twenty-two-one, twenty-two FLVS legislative report. Six point four is the proposed approval of candidate for the FLVS Foundation's Board of Directors. Six point five is our FLVS Quarterly Staff Data Report. Lastly, item six point six is our disposal assets. And we request the approval of the recommended actions for five point one through five point five and six point one through six point six.
All right, thank you. Any board members, any questions on either of those agenda items? Hearing none, is there an on-the-bus motion to adopt and approve the recommended actions as to the consent agenda items five point one through five point five and agenda items six point one through six point six?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Welcome, Tony. I see.
Thank you. Had an issue.
So, motion carries unanimously. Now we move to discussion. We'll now move to discussion items for our agenda. Dr. Algaes, move to seven point one.
We have three financial items for the board's proposed discussion agenda. Ms. Corey Wheeler, Senior Director of Financial and Treasury Services, will be reviewing these items. Corey?
Thank you, Dr. Al Gaze, and good morning, board. Item seven point one is the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget amendment number four. This item is to request approval of a proposed fourth amendment to the twenty-two, twenty-three budget for the purposes of updating the Florida School, Florida Virtual School budget for estimated revenues and appropriation changes in the general fund, special revenue fund, and enterprise fund. The fiscal impact of this amendment on the ending fund balance for the general fund is a net decrease of ten million, changing from a hundred and twenty-three million to a hundred and thirteen million. Revenues decreased by eight point eight million and appropriations increased by one point four million. This amendment has no fiscal impact on the ending fund balance for the special revenue fund as revenues equal expenditures. The fiscal impact of this and on the ending fund balance for the enterprise fund is a net increase of nine point seven million, changing from fifty-six million to sixty-six million. Revenues increased by two million and appropriations decreased by seven million. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Corey. We request your approval on the recommended action on item seven point one.
Thank you. So is there any, any question for board members? Hearing none, there's a motion to adopt recommended action on agenda item seven point one.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye, aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Dr. Algaes, seven point two.
Thank you. Back to you, Corey, for seven point two.
Thank you. Seven point two is the accounts receivable debt write-off. We are presenting receivable write-offs from scholarships in the general fund totaling three thousand sixty-eight dollars. We have exhausted all efforts to secure payments without success. It has been determined that the invoices are uncollectible. Thank you.
Thank you, Corey. We request your approval of recommended action on item seven point two.
Board members, any, any questions on those items? It's a small amount, which is good. Is there a motion to adopt recommended action on the agenda item seven point two?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say, any, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye, aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Algaes, seven point three.
Thank you. Corey, please continue with seven point three.
Thank you. Seven point three is the fiscal year twenty-two-three, twenty-four budget. We are presenting for discussion and approval the proposed fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget. The twenty-three, twenty-four budget consists of general funds of three hundred and sixty point four-six million, special revenue of eleven million, internal service funds of seventy-four point one-six million, and enterprise funds of forty-five point seven-five million. A substantial portion of the twenty-two-three, twenty-four budgeted expenditures results from recommendations based on strategic plan initiatives. Other budgeted expenditures relate to additional personnel upgrades, raises, information technology costs absorbed back into the general fund after the expiration of certain CARES and ESAR grants, additional software licenses and computer hardware, marketing costs, legislative cost increases such as the Florida retirement system, increased health insurance costs, increased course development, and operating development projects. A budget summary and change in fund balance summary are provided. Total revenues and transfers in for all funds are four hundred and forty-one point five million. Total appropriations and transfers out for all funds are four hundred and ninety-one point four million. Fund balance is projected to decrease by forty-nine point nine million during the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. Overall, the ending fund balance is projected to be two hundred and point four million. Thank you. I now turn it back over to you, Dr. Algaes.
Thank you, Corey. We request your approval of recommended action on item seven point three.
On, on that, that decrease of almost fifty million, is, is, is that normal business? Is that amount in prior years? What has it been? Has it been lower than that, higher than that?
No, year after year, generally, the fund balance is going up. As you might recall, last year, we discussed that our fund balance, again, a lot has to do with the salaries that we budget that don't get expended and the, in the, in the the fund balance or the savings account, so to speak. And we had mentioned that we were working on a lot of the projects to use some of that fund balance funding to be able to lead those projects, and that's part of, that's what this is.
Thank you. Dr. Aggies, I have a question, Chair.
Go ahead.
The budget, I have no problem approving this budget subject to a review at the next quarterly meeting of potential mitigation that might be necessary.
Absolutely, whatever the board asks.
I, I, I concur with that. Any other comments? So, is there a motion to adopt recommended action on agenda item seven point three with the added comment from board member Boswoli?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Dr. Algaes, let's go to eight point one.
Thank you, sir. Eight point one, we have a number of proposed FLVS board policies, policy revisions, and repeals up for first reading. We will request the board's authorization to publish, publish the text and provide public notice of a hearing on these proposed policies, policy revisions, and repeals. And Dr. David Dagata will be reviewing these for you. David?
I'm sure that everyone has noticed by now, long before now, that the good work on the policies is actually quite great, graceful and intelligent. And it couldn't possibly be attributable to me. And you'd be right. Let me go ahead and turn the floor to the brains and grace beyond the operation. Our Deputy General Counsel Karen Chastain. Please, Karen.
Thank you, David. That was very kind. And good morning, board members and Dr. Algaes. Today, we request the board's approval for first reading and publication for the adoption of seven new policies, the amendment of four existing policies, and the repeal of twelve legacy policies. I will give a brief overview, and then we are here to answer any questions. Three of the proposed policies relate to personnel matters for drug-free workplace, for illness or injury in the line of duty, and an update to the existing military leave policy. Next, five of the proposed policies relate to facilities for plant security, video surveillance, and vandalism. And there are updates to the existing maintenance policy and the existing emergency management policy. Next, we have one new proposed policy for challenges to the use of instructional materials, library materials, and reading lists. We do have procedures in place, and this proposed policy will formalize the full process to be used. Another new item relates to social media. The proposed policy aligns with the recently enacted twenty-two-three legislation, and the policy is drafted at a high level so that the administration can quickly issue procedures and standards to inform the FLVS community, students, and employees so that we can keep up with this evolving area. Next, we propose an update to the board's bylaw three point two for the board's establishment of its quarterly meeting schedule. We are proposing this change so that the board will not need to waive bylaw three point two due to the timing of the agenda item. By way of example, and because the policy is not yet amended, you will see waiver language in your upcoming agenda item ten point one later this morning. Last, we recommend the repeal of twelve legacy policies because they are either obsolete or they will be replaced by the new policies to be adopted eventually as set forth in this policy. We request your approval, and David and I are here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, David and Karen. Since November of two thousand nineteen, the board has adopted a hundred and forty-three new policies, amended twenty-five of those adopted policies, adopted twenty-six new board bylaws, and repealed sixty-five FLVS legacy policies and with the remaining fifty-one legacy policies. So, of all the policies we had before, fifty-one since before you all were on board, fifty-one remain. Everything else has been updated or repealed or added. So, shows a huge amount of work done by the board, and it's thanks to the work of David, Karen, and I'd say their team, but it's really Karen.
I commend, commend you for all that hard work and going through all those policies. And as we see them each, each, each boardman, each board meeting, it is a mammoth task to go through and make all the changes and everything. So, thank you for the dedication to getting all that done. Any comments from other board members?
Mr. Chair, I want to reiterate the, the comments of you and Dr. A. This is, I've done this before for clients. This is a really Herculean task that's been achieved. And I would also reconfirm Counsel Dagata's comment around style, grace, and brains in, in Karen's approach to this, clearly lacking from Dagata directly. So, that's really important. I just want to make sure everybody understood that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification, board members.
Approval on the recommended action on eight point one.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to adopt and approve recommended action on item eight point one?
I have to follow that with the motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye, aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Dr. Algaes, please proceed.
I'm just not completely sure what you adopted on this last one. With the adoption.
I think it has to do with David.
She didn't adopt me, I'll tell you this.
For eight point two, we present the proposed twenty-two-three, twenty-four FLVS Student Code of Conduct for a first reading. All districts are required to adopt the Student Code of Conduct and to distribute it to the appropriate stakeholders. We request your approval of the recommended action on eight point two.
Any comments? Looks straightforward to me. Is there a motion to adopt and approve recommended action on item eight point two?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye, aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. We'll now move the board's consideration of the proposed policies and policy revisions set for public hearing at section nine point, no, section nine of the agenda. As board chair, I hereby open the public hearing on agenda item nine point one, proposed Florida Virtual School Board Policies, Policy Revisions, and Repeals. Rather than retaking roll call, I'll note that for the record, that Coach Rhyter, Board Member Arza, Board Member Con Hennessy, Board Member Boswoli are also in attendance at this meeting, hearing. The purpose of this hearing is to discharge the board's obligation under Florida law and to provide the greatest degree of transparency pertaining to the development and adoption of Florida Virtual School Board Policies. The subject of this hearing is the board's consideration of potential adoption of changes to its policies. The board earlier authorized publication of the entire text of the proposed policies and repeals before, before us today. And it also directed public notice of the date and time of this public hearing. Now, meddily and publicly noted, in accordance with Florida law, the proposed policies, policy revision, and repeals are before the board for further consideration and final action. Specifically, we are asked to adopt the proposed policies, policy revisions, and repeals described in Specifically, we are asked to adopt the proposed policies, policy revisions, and repeals described in that catch attached to agenda item nine point one. Accordingly, the board will take up public comment at this time. Speakers are reminded to observe the following ground rules. Public comments must be pertinent to the proposed policy and repeals. Each speaker is limited to a two-minute comment period and cannot yield time to another speaker. At the end of the two-minute period, the speaker's microphone will be muted. If if a speaker wishes to register additional comments beyond the two-minute period, the speaker may do so in writing in accordance with applicable board policies and bylaws. Speakers must state their first and last name before delivering their comments. Speakers may ask questions, but board members and Florida Virtual School officials are not required to respond. Rather, it shall be their prerogative to respond. The board chair will consider taking up any such responses after the public hearing is closed. Finally, speakers are reminded that this meeting, including the hearing, is being recorded. Operator, is there any members of the public who have called in and wish to speak to the board on this item nine point one?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So this concludes the comment portion of this hearing. Board members, do you have any questions or comments? Hearing none. Dr. Algas, do you have any comments before I take up a vote?
Yeah, in addition to David, Karen, and team, our leadership team, and many others have spent many hours dedicated to ensuring our policies are in accordance with state statutes, federal statutes, rules, and regulations. And again, our our team that you heard Chrissy discussing earlier is making sure we are in compliance with all of these. So thank you all, and we request the approval of recommended action on nine point one.
Thank you. Great job by all. Is there a motion to adopt the recommended action on that agenda item nine point one?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Dr. Algas, please proceed to discussion organization meeting ten.
Thank you. Under discussion for the organizational meeting, we have two items. First is ten point one, the Board of Trustees' organizational board meeting date for fiscal year twenty twenty-three twenty-four meeting dates. I recommend the establishment of the dates in the attached document for the agenda review workshop and regularly scheduled quarterly meetings for the twenty twenty-three twenty-four fiscal year. I also recommend the board's waiver of section three point two one of the board's bylaws, which calls for the approval of the meeting schedules to be determined during the board's annual organizational meeting at the beginning of each fiscal year, quote unquote. We request your approval for the recommended action on ten point one.
Thank you, Dr. Algas. Board members, any comments on the proposed dates? Hearing none. Is there a motion to adopt and approve the recommended action on item ten point one?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye, aye.
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 Okay, motion carries unanimously. Now we turn to election of board members, board officers, on agenda ten point two. Dr. Algas will preside over the election in accordance with board policies and bylaws. However, the board must first consider and vote upon the recommended action. The recommended action under this agenda item is to elect by majority vote the board a chair and a co-chair whose terms of service shall begin July one, twenty twenty-three, and to waive section seven point two three of the board bylaws. Board members, are there any questions before I call call up a motion on this item? So is there a motion to adopt and approve recommended action on item ten point two?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Dr. Algas, please proceed with the election of board chair and co-chair.
Certainly. First, I'd like to thank board chair Watrit and co-chair Ryder for your dedication to your roles this past, not just school year, but prior years as well. You've set the standard for this organization ever since the reconstitution of the board. And you have done a spectacular job, and I, on behalf of the students, the staff, and the community, I want to thank you both for for doing such a stellar job at that. And of course, the entire board as well. We truly appreciate your service and your support. It's an honor to preside over the election of the board officers, and according with section three point one of this board's bylaws, our election procedures are governed by Robert's Rules of Order, which provide the following concerning nominations and elections. You can nominate another person or nominate yourself. Nominations do not require a second. If multiple nominations are received, then the board votes for each nominee in the order the nomination was received. The first nominee to receive at least a majority vote is elected to the office, and no further votes are taken. If no nominee is elected, then the process is repeated until a nominee receives at least a majority vote. And if we stumble upon any of this, we have David and Karen to recruit us. So at this time, the floor is open for nominations for board chair. Are there any nominations for board chair?
I'll nominate the board member Linda Ryder, the chair.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, Miss Linda Ryder has been nominated as chair, whose term shall begin July first, twenty twenty-three. Ms. Ryder, do you accept the nomination for chair?
Yes, I do. Thank you so much, everyone. I have comments, but I'll save them for the end.
Vote of the chair, all those in favor of Miss Linda Ryder, please say aye.
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 Do I say aye, too?
We'll assume it's an aye.
Okay.
Thank you, and congratulations, Ms. Ryder.
Thank you so much, everyone.
At this time, the floor is open for nominations for board co-chair. Are there any nominations for board co-chair?
I nominate Tony Arza.
Second.
Tony Arza has been nominated as co-chair, whose term shall begin July twenty-first, July first, twenty twenty-three. Are there any other nominations? Dr. Arza, do you accept the nomination for co-chair?
I do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll therefore call for a vote on the co-chair. All those in favor of Dr. Arza, please say aye.
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 Uh, okay. If he learns how to use Zoom.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Thank you, and congratulations, Dr. Arza. Now we return the meeting to you, board chair Watrit.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Algas, and congratulations to our new chair, Linda Ryder, and our new co-chair, Tony Arza. So it'd be good to just sit back and be a board member.
Thank you, Dr. Watrit.
Now let's move to section eleven of today's agenda. Because agenda item eleven point one concerns proposed changes to the CEO employment contract, the board will turn its general council rather than the CEO to present this particular item. Dr. Dardica, please proceed.
Thank you, Dr. Watret. As you know, eleven point one covers a proposed third amendment for employment to of Dr. Algais, the contract of employment for Dr. Algais as president and CEO. You'll recall at the March twenty twenty-three quarterly meeting, the board approved a second amendment to Dr. Algais's employment contract, and that amendment changed the duration of the contract to coincide with the June thirty, twenty twenty-three end date of his deferred retirement option program, often referred to as drop, as required by chapter one twenty-one of the Florida statutes. Of course, chapter one twenty-one governs the entire Florida retirement system, and that includes drop. And drop previously provided for an extension of deferred retirement of up to sixty months, so sixty-month deferred retirement period. After this board's March meeting, the Florida Legislature passed Senate Bill seventy twenty-four, which amends chapter one twenty-one. And in pertinent part, SB seventy twenty-four extends the deferred retirement periods for FRS members right across the board. I am thrilled to report that the governor just signed yesterday SB seventy twenty-four. Dr. Algais is among those FRS members whose drop participation by virtue of SB seventy twenty-four may be extended for a period of up to ninety-six months, whereas before it was only sixty. The agenda item at hand presents two proposed contract options, each in the form of a third amendment to the contract for the board's consideration, selection, and approval. Each option acknowledges and supports the drop extension to which Dr. Algais is eligible under SB seventy twenty-four, and each option provides for his continued employment of FLVS's president and CEO throughout the duration of his newly extended drop period. The main distinctions between the two are as follows. Exhibit A is that third amended contract which would continue Dr. A's current performance pay plan and base salary, current base salary. And Exhibit B is a form of an amendment that would discontinue the performance pay plan and adjust the CEO's base salary quartering. At the end of the day, the CEO's compensation would effectively remain the same, whether it's in the form of a base salary or a combination of base salary plus performance pay. Each one of these options was developed in consultation, of course, with me, outside special counsel for FLVS, our office of general counsel at large, and the CEO. And I have determined that each option is legally sound, consistent with board policies and bylaws, and compliant with all applicable laws and regulations of the state of Florida. Dr. Algais, who has also had the opportunity to consult with his own legal counsel, likewise supports each option. Because the agenda item provides these two options, I recommend the board chair to open the floor for board member discussion before taking up a motion to select either of the amendments found in Exhibits A and B. And of course, I would be happy to answer any questions and facilitate such discussions and formulate motions as they need to be, along with our deputy general counsel, Ms. Chastain. So with all that stated, I respectfully turn back to Dr. Watret.
Thank you, Dr. Danka. And I think this is a good time to open up for comments to the board members to weigh both these options as opposed to having the performance, or not the performance, but the bottom line is that the total compensation remains remains the same. Comments from the board in preference of I exhibit A or exhibit B?
I I definitely am going more toward exhibit B for a number of different reasons. Uh, David, we were talking the other day that giving, doing it through exhibit B, without the paid performance plan, it also affects Dr. Algais's contributions into FRS. Is that, there's number differences with that, too, right? So that's like, that's an advantage for him.
Yeah, all of it is qualifying FRS income, right? So the monies are contributed by both sides. That is the employer and FLVS employee during that deferred retirement option.
Okay, so anyway, so my, yeah, my feeling is definitely B.
David, I didn't understand the answer to that, because I think board member Ryder or soon-to-be-chair Ryder's question was does does the, does either option impact Dr. Algais's contribution level to his retirement plan? Or are they the same, assuming, assuming, assuming he hits the paid performance maximums?
Okay, so they're two different things, and probably why you wouldn't, why you didn't understand it is because I answered a totally different question. There are actually two different questions packed into this. So the contribution rate remains the same. The amount changes. If you have a lower salary, you have a lower amount contributed. So that's one answer. The second answer is your retirement benefits during retirement is based on your base pay, your qualifying base pay. So there is a difference when it comes between Exhibits A and B.
Okay. And so what you're saying is, let me just simplify it then. Under Exhibit A, the monies that Dr. A might be otherwise eligible for under the paid performance piece would not go would not be subject to contribution on the FRS, right? Because that's not part of his base salary.
That's correct.
Okay, I I think that, I think that, I don't mean to put words in Linda, I think that was the essence of her question.
Right, and I kind of knew that from the FRS system. I don't, I don't know if I said it the right way, but yeah, that's exactly what I meant.
And that's why Exhibit B is potentially better for Dr. for the CEO in terms of retirement.
Exactly, there's a difference in in contribution.
Tony, do you have any comment?
So my only thing would be, I think, the conversation I had before with our attorney Dagata was basically that if up to this point, Dr. Algais has met all of his performance objectives that have been set out, it's kind of just a formality. I, you know, I believe in in performance pay plans because, right, people should be held accountable for the work they do, but since he's proven historically to always meet those objectives, it's just a formality, really. So I I think Exhibit B, I also lean in favor of that.
Or Madma Con Harris?
Yeah, can we bring up the document that the that you did for the, you know, just the outside search of, you know, compensation plans for equivalent, the one that showed, I think, two seventy-eight was in the average between the tenth and twenty-fifth percentile? Is that available to bring up?
Uh, Dr. A, I I can bring it up. I think it's the revised recommendation, the Excel spreadsheet, board member Cornarans, I think you were talking about?
Yeah.
I'll go ahead and open it.
I think that was done by an outside service, correct, to evaluate the, you know, the marketplace for a similar position.
So yes, we had a third party do a thorough analysis across the board in industries, and then there, each board member was provided with several spreadsheets to that effect. And then there, in the there was, let's see, what is this called? The recommendations table was then provided to each board member with an HR recommendation. Can I share my screen? It's the same one we're talking about.
Yeah, that's the, that's the one I was looking for. So, and this is outside firm that did this, correct? Put the data together.
Yes, that firm had put all the data in there. The recommendation is from the compensation department based on that data.
Right, correct. Which, if you look at it, you know, is it two seventy-eight is actually higher than what we're
Which if you look at it, you know, is it two seventy eight is actually higher than what we're proposing in B. I'm a big proponent of pay for performance, but I think at this, the two options presented in front, I will agree with the B and maybe leave it open for additional pay for performance outlines at a future date, but I would go with B as well.
Yeah. So I, I agree. And I'm insistent with other board members of B as the option I would recommend going with. So David, and asking you, do we need a motion to choose Exhibit A or Exhibit B?
Sure. Okay, let me, let me just go ahead and read a hypothetical question, which if it sounds good to anyone, can be adopted, seconded and voted on. I heard Exhibit B. So a motion to the effect of, I move to select, approve and authorize execution of that version of the third amended contract attached to this agenda item as Exhibit B.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everyone. David, any further comments?
No, just that that was the first time ever in my relationship with Mr. Ed Pozzoli that he ever seconded anything that I had to say.
It's a blind squirrel kind of concept, you know what I'm saying?
All right. This concludes the discussion agenda portion of our meeting. Back to Dr. Dagada. Please proceed with your next items for comments, reports and presentations.
So I was going to, at this meeting, provide for a kind of a look back report of the Office General Counsel that makes me look as good as possible. But I'm going to tell you, it really is worthy of taking a look at. It's just, now's not the time. We can look at it at another meeting going forward, I'm hoping, during the OGC comment period. I just want to say, you know, the graduation really was awesome. And I think that it was now, are now newly elected Chair Ryder, who had mentioned really when, when you see it, and I think you too, Chair Watret, when you see these kids, it really does remind you of what it is that we do on a daily basis. And it just feels good. Sometimes we're bereft of that feeling simply because we, you know, the online relationship that we have is not the same one as the teachers have with these kids and seeing them every day. And I'll tell you, it is really great. This is the form of education. Number one, that's top notch. There's no question about it in comparison to other actors and competitors in my view. My own children attend FLVS and it is just a blessing. It's a blessing to Florida families to have this jewel. So I thank you for your stewardship, moving it forward and this leadership team. And it is just terrific to see these graduates. I have to also give a major shout out to Dr. Kinetis, who you heard from today. Enterprise compliance was a term largely unknown to this organization, at least my knowledge, leading up to twenty nineteen. And now it's part of our DNA. And I thought, I think that Dr. Kinetis, and this takes an entire village too, is doing just an excellent, excellent job with all, you know, tracking the laws, rules and regulations pertinent to us. If you think about it, just this past legislative session, dealing forty three new bills and laws. So huge congratulations and a word of thanks to Dr. Kinetis. And thank you for all of your service, all of the board members today. And for our outgoing Chair, Dr. Watret. Tremendous job. You helped in really steadying and righting the ship. And we're looking forward to your leadership as well, Chair Ryder. Madam Chair, I'm going to have to go with that, Madam Chair. And for Dr. Arza to have joined on as the co-chair, we're just really excited to have you. So that concludes my comments. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. And before we go to CEO remarks, I'd like to say I'm so pleased to have worked with the last two years as board chair with Dr. Algais. And it's good to know that common sense prevailed in the change to the drop policy that allows him to continue as CEO and work with with Madam Chair Ryder for the next year. So great, good job. Thank you. And Dr. Algais, it's over to you for closing comments.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, board members, for your faith in me. I promise not to let you down. I look forward to serving with you for the next several years. Once again, I do want to make mention of Sam Burgis and his grace and his incredible dedication to this organization. He works behind the scene, his humility. A lot of folks probably have no idea what he does for the organization, but I can tell you, he makes sure that the clocks run, that the trains run on time, that everything is, you know, perfect. And he has been, like I said, lockstep with me since we've been together here at the beginning. So I do want to make sure that, that I acknowledged his his presence in our organization and his grace and his demeanor throughout all of this, willing to, you know, do whatever needed to make sure that the organization thrives. So thank you, Sam. And I'd like to thank you all, again, as usual, for participating in today's meeting. Thank you, Dr. Watret and Ms. Ryder, again, for your service the past school year. Congratulations, Ms. Ryder on Chair. Look forward to working with you and Dr. Arza the same way we work with Dr. Watret and you, Dr. Watret. We know we'll be reaching out to you continuously to make sure that we get your input as we move forward. And Mr. Cornarans and Mr. Pozzoli, thank you for being, as was mentioned earlier, I think it was before the meeting, the quorum of four, that the board had to be here every single meeting just to be able to get anything done when we only had four members and you four were here day in and day out. And that's, again, a testament to your dedication of being available and working for our students, our staff and our community. So thank you and congratulations again to Ms. Ryder and Dr. Arza. Look forward to the upcoming year. We will have all the requests that were requested at this meeting. I bet folks take notes so we can make sure we have that available to you by the next meeting. And again, reach out to me for anything at all that you need. It's available twenty-four seven. If I wake up when you call, I'll be happy to answer the phone. Back to you, Chair Watret.
All right. Thank you very much. And I do want to thank Sam for stepping up during the time of the uncertainty with the drop policy. I really appreciate it and spending time with them at the meetings when we have them. And now go to closing. So Madam Chair-elect, Ms. Ryder.
I don't know where to start. So, well, thank everybody for your confidence. And Lynn, you don't know what you just voted yes on, but I thank you for your confidence. It's going to be a long ride and a bumpy one at times. I want to apologize to everybody that we've just lost that little bit of, Dr. Watret, with that accent gave us a little bit of class that you're now going to lose with my Philadelphia accent. So I'll apologize ahead of time for that because you don't want to listen to me read a phone book, even though you would love to listen to him do it. So we'll start with that.
Thank you, Linda.
No. I want, so we came together, you know, four of us, we, nobody, nobody knew each other. And we're kind of like a really interesting board because we kind of all gelled. And I mean, there's a lot of respect on this board. And you just ran right in and took over when nobody else wanted to. And you stepped up to the plate and I want to thank you so much. It's been a pleasure. With the, I feel like I'm doing your eulogy.
I'm still here.
It all of a sudden it sounded like a eulogy, but I want to thank you really, like, honestly, for, you know, for being willing to step up. And you just, it's been a pleasure just sitting here, not having to do any during the meetings. I'm going to miss that. You doing all the work and you've just, it's just been great. So I want to thank you very much for stepping up and doing that. And Dr. Arza, this is going to be, now you really have to be a co-chair. I really never had to. It was kind of like, you know, I was there, but we only, we didn't have, we only had a quorum with four of us. So if Dr. Watret couldn't be there, it kind of was no meeting, but you might have to do things.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm going to get doing working.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll work. I can't believe.
Coach me, coach me.
I'll do, I'll do a little, we'll do a little coaching, but no, I'm looking forward to that. But thank you to everybody, really. From, it's, I really appreciate the confidence moving forward and I'm looking forward, yeah. I mean, jokes aside, I'm looking forward to, to what's coming. And I want to thank the staff again for amazing, all this preparation, all this work. And Dr. Algais, I'm happy to have you back in real. Sam, I can't see your face, but but you were so gracious during that whole mess. So I, you know, I don't think any of us are ever going to forget that. And of course, Dr. Dagada, what can I say? It's great. Nothing. Are you used to that, right? Okay, those are my closing remarks, but thank you again, Dr. Watret.
Thank you, Linda. I appreciate all your comments. Board Member Arza?
Yeah, so I want to, yeah, so I want to thank everyone for their confidence in me. And I want to thank Dr. Watret for his service. He's done a great job at leading the meetings. They've gone incredibly smoothly. And I'm sure that will continue with former co-chair Ryder. And I also want to say that I was able to go to the graduation and listen to Dr. Watret give a speech to the students. And he did a tremendous job and also Dr. Algais. And one of the things that I noticed that was really powerful, and I spoke with Sam about it, was that actually a lot of the students, you wouldn't imagine that they actually know each other, that a lot of the students are friends. And I think it's a testament to this organization realizing that the whole child, which is both body and soul, and so realizing they're not just minds, right? But that they also need relationships and community. And I think that that's really important. And it was a testament to how our staff really treats our students. And we realize that they're not just minds that were, you know, connecting through computer screens, but actually people who have relationships, families. And I think it's a testament to the good work that's being done here, really by the people on the day to day that are on the ground. And I think we saw that also with our teacher at that moment earlier. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. And then I want to thank Board Member Pozzoli for nominating me and for Dr. Watret for nominating me as well and everyone's confidence. So look forward to working with everyone. And then for Sam, I also want to reiterate the comments that have already been said about his demeanor and how he's handled himself throughout this whole process, being incredibly professional, accepting, you know, the scrutiny of this board and, you know, the process that he went through. And the dignity with which he did it, I think was a testament to all of us of how professional this board is and how we try to, you know, conduct ourselves in a manner adequate to the responsibilities that we have. And so I'm grateful to be a part of this team. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Board Member Connor Harris?
Yes, so Linda and Tony took half of my list. I was going to say, so I'm just going to keep, but I'll add on to it. You know, great presentation today and not only the organization, the foundation, what the work they're doing, what they recognize in the clubs. It's good to hear that we have over sixty clubs and it's not just everything's virtual. So the whole organization and everything is great. Mr. Pozzoli mentioned the House Bill One and what are we going to do, mitigate it? I actually had a presentation on it and I'm very satisfied with the vision of looking forward and the contingency plan with additional marketing dollars if we need it. So everything is really going well and it's almost feel bad that we can't fix things, you know, because sometimes you come into boards and there's a lot to fix. So I think we just got to keep helping and adding on to what, what a great foundation we have here. That's it.
Thank you. Board Member Pozzoli?
Real quick, I want to thank the wisdom of the legislature to extend Dr. A's stay here, although that wasn't specifically the legislation, but it did, it was to our benefit. I also want to thank Sam for the work that he's done in the manner in which he's handled the transition scenario and the uncertainty of some of this. So I appreciate him. I do, all kidding aside, I want to thank David Dagada. You all need to appreciate the fact that we are, we have good legal counsel that keeps us the organization and the board particularly out of trouble. That's a vital import. But he does that with humor. Lastly, I want to thank John Watret. Look, it's a thankless job to sit and have taken on that responsibility as Chair, particularly during the transition time that the four of us initially went through. So I want to thank you for that, John. Really do appreciate it. And lastly, I want to congratulate and offer full support to our incoming Chair and co-chair, both Linda and Tony. I do would ask Tony to check with his team technology wise. The rumor is, the rumor is that it's your father who is in charge of technology. I would ask that you fire Ralph Arza for overseeing that technology in a very poor fashion. So, and you could tell him I said so publicly. But that said, all kidding aside, congratulations to the two of you and look forward to your stewardship.
Thank you. And I would like to say thank you to everyone as well for the, essentially the three board members, and then Tony came on. To, it's a great team that we have here at Florida Virtual School for the Board of Trustees. And in the past two years, you know, I thank the staff and everyone for the support that they've given me and as we've moved things forward. And, you know, as I look back, you know, we have done a lot in two years for Florida Virtual Schools. And it really is, you know, graduation is the pinnacle of that. We see what, all the work that we do and all the work the staff and the teachers and the administration put into this. The reward is the graduation of those thousand plus students that graduated Florida Virtual School. And many, many are going on to college as well. I mean, I have the numbers, Dr. Algais sent me the numbers. And so it really is a rewarding process. I, you know, online education is a passion for mine. And that's, that's essentially ninety percent of our twenty thousand students in the worldwide campus of Embra Riddle are online. So I do believe in it and I know it is good and solid way of learning. And it's going to continue to learn because it is part of the education structure now. Online education, technology is changing. You know, one of the things that we'll have to look at, I'm sure, is how AI is going to start creeping in. And it already is in higher education, other parts of it. How do we incorporate that to the learning process in the online environment? But again, congratulations to Linda and Tony for stepping up. You know, I'm on, still on the board and hope to be continuing on the board, although I haven't been reappointed. But I've been, I've been told that you just stay here until you're not here. But it's been a great, great two years. Looking forward to the future and then spending more time with you. And hopefully we'll have a few more in-person meetings that we can really get together and have some of, you know, not as formal Zoom meetings as well and have some sidebars going along. So thank you all for the last two years of putting up me as Chair. And Dr. Algais, Dr. Dagada and Sam, thank you for all the work that you and your teams put in for this as well. uh the work that you and your teams put in for this as well to make these board meetings easy to go through. And then Bruce, I know in the background you do a lot in terms of supporting, getting everything ready. So thank you too for all you've done. All right. So now we will next turn to adjournment of this meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion Paris passes unanimously. So this concludes today's quarterly meeting of Florida Virtual School Board of Trustees. I want to again thank everyone uh for a job well done and look forward to the next meeting where, as Ms. Ryder says, I can sit back and observe.
You're gonna love it.
Thank you all.
Thanks, guys.